Well, good morning. Kern County has led the way on energy development since the discovery of oil in the Kern River Field in 1899, the first wind energy in California in 1981, and the largest commercial solar project in the United States in Eastern Kern in 2011. Today, we continue to define and accelerate energy development for the future of California. I'm pleased to announce that Kern County has received notice from the U.S. Department of Energy that we, with our stakeholder partners, have been awarded a Communities Leap, which is Local Energy Action Program Technical Assistance Grant, for development of a clean energy and carbon management business park that will make Kern County a national center of excellence in new clean energy and carbon management industries and investment. The proposed location of this 30 million square foot park on 4,000 acres combined with over 30,000 acres of solar for power on our challenged farmlands in the valley, impacted by state groundwater policies that will no longer be viable for agriculture. Situated next to our extensive oil fields that are processing permits for carbon capture and storage, the two can work together to create a new clean energy and carbon management hub for all of California. With proximity to rail and interstate highways, the possibilities for connection to the ports of L.A. and Stockton will expand Kern's economic future and create new pathways for jobs and training to lift all our communities. This first step will provide the overview we need for setting the table for private sector investment in new and innovative carbon management technologies, from direct air capture to green hydrogen and use of these technologies in carbon capture areas. This process will include a stakeholder process with our partners and communities in understanding what types of industries and jobs could be a reality in just the next few years. Then, we leave this to the private sector and area property owners to assemble the design, which could be more than one park, and finance the permitting submittal to our planning and natural resources department. The public process will include all voices and result in a public dialogue on appropriate conditions and protections for the full board to consider. This is our pathway to build a new future for our communities of high-road jobs and investment from around the world, in the county, and our partner cities. Renewable energy brought $60 billion of private and public investment to the county over the last 15 years, and we can do it again. On behalf of the board, I want to thank everyone who's supported us in this application, with special thanks to our project lead, Lorelei Oviat, Director of Planning and Natural Resources, and our CAO's office. Thank you to Governor Newsom and his administration, specifically Wade Crowfoot and Didi Myers for the support they provided. Thank you to our partners, Dr. Lynette Zelinski, President of CSUB, Dr. Sonia Christian and Camila Chavez in partnership with the Kern Community College District, Richard Chapman with Kern Economic Development Corporation, the City of Bakersfield, Bakersfield Chamber, Shannon Eddy with our Commercial Solar Industry, Octavio Escobedo, Chairman of the Tahoma Indian Tribal Government, the Kern County Farm Bureau, the Building Trades Council, and IBEW. We're now available for questions, and I have our Director of Planning and Natural Resources here, but first I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues would like to say anything? I'll step aside.
Thank you, Chairman Scrivener. I just wanted to steal a phrase from our Planning Director Lorelei Oviat and say that we're not waiting on the future to happen in Kern County, we're actively inventing it and pursuing a future. And so I just wanted to congratulate her and her team, as well as our CAO, Mr. Ryan Alsop, and all of the county employees that have worked hard on this. I think it's going to be a great thing for Kern County.
We know that a rising tide lifts all boats. No one should be left out in Kern County. No member of our workforce, no striving family member, no young child who is looking for the jobs of the future, the automotive jobs of the future, the energy jobs of the future. Kern County is poised to lead, once again, the globe on these matters, and we promise you, this rising tide will lift all Kern County boats, no one left behind. Thank you, Kern County.
I'm not going to say anything.
I'm just taking questions.
Lorelei.
Okay.
All right, guys, you can begin your question and answers.
So, you were talking about the new renewable income that you have received now from federal money. Is this for the solar or is for a different array of energy that is coming to Kern County?
So, this particular grant doesn't come with any money to the county. It comes with technical assistance from the Department of Energy. So, they're going to fund their own teams from the National Resource Energy Lab in Colorado to work with us on this new vision for a carbon management park. So, the idea behind this is that the carbon capture areas are things that we're already working on with our oil companies, but what kind of CO2 are you going to put into the ground? Those are the clean energy technologies that we need to understand so that we can understand how much water do they use, what kind of quality of water do they use, what kinds of jobs do they produce, what is the status of when they can scale up? We want to have a transformed economy in four years. We want to have this park up and running, and we want those private investors and we want those Wall Street investors to see Kern County as the center of excellence for carbon management in California.
Also, we were discussing earlier that you can go ahead and inject the carbon into the pockets that are available, but how can you keep that carbon from coming back up?
That is a good question. That's why we're starting environmental impact reports on the carbon capture projects, and we've just started the first one on CRC's Carbon Vault. So, we will now go through a public process and dialogue and look at the science and come up with the right conditions, and then this project, the carbon capture projects, will be presented to the Board of Supervisors for consideration.
How long do you expect for this process to continue to be?
Well, for the carbon capture EIRs, that's a 14-month process. The DOE grant, starting now, is a, within 18 months, will be finished.
Is there a model for this anyplace else in the world, on this scale?
Not that I'm aware of.
Where will this take place in Kern County?
So, think about our valley. Think about Pixley on the north, think about the oil fields down to, you know, Tahoma Ranch, maybe a little above where Tahoma Ranch and the grapevine is. All of that west side of the valley is the areas where, because of the Sustainable Groundwater Act, they're going to have to make decisions about how to use their farmland. And as you know, we're already tearing out orchards and waters being moved off of those lands. So, those lands next to the oil field is the place where we would like to have property owners consider putting this business park, and then we're going to need 30,000 acres of solar or more to power it.
So, you don't have a specific location yet, but can you give us kind of a timeline as to how you see that?
Yes. So, we expect this to be an 18-month process with all of our stakeholders, looking at the different types of carbon management, you know, what's the state of that? That's what the Department of Energy does really well. They have their finger on all those new technologies, and then we need to understand what fits here in California, what fits for us. So, that's 18 months. During the same 18 months, we're going to be processing the applications that have been submitted to us for carbon capture, so that's happening at the same time. So, now you're into 2023. We then are asking these property owners, and I'm sure they already are, private property owners, to start working amongst themselves to decide who is going to apply for this park, what does that land look like out there. They then come to the planning department, submit an application for a specific plan, we do an environmental impact report on that, and that has to go through another public process. So, my projections are all of this coming together at the end of 2024.
How long has this been in the works in terms of when the first phone call was made? And who was it that took or made that first phone call?
Let me ask you what you mean by first phone call.
How did the conversation get started with the DOE?
So, the DOE Leap Grant has been out for a while. You know, this is, this carbon management park is an idea that I have had and the planning department has had. We've talked to Stanford, we've talked to UC Berkeley, we didn't really get anything, but that's interesting. And so it was October, November, when it was brought to my attention that there's actually a leap application that we could get technical assistance. So, I would say that's when we started reaching out to our partners, and I want to personally thank the wide coalition that we have put together here. This includes everybody from labor at the state, labor councils in Washington, the Tahoma Tribe, the Dolores Huerta Foundation, you know, elected officials, you can go and look at our application. This is an idea whose time has come.
Yes.
And if Kern County is being asked to invent a future, then that's what we'll do.
Zach, you want to talk about Lorelei's leadership on this?
Well, I don't think that there's any doubt that she's the most talented planning director in the country.
Here, here.
And that, you know, and she's, she is a, she's not just, she's not just our planning director, but she is someone who's integrally involved in our economic development efforts, and she displays that each and every day, and so we're very proud of her and we're grateful to have her. Thank you.
What does this mean for the air quality? Like, will it affect it? How will it impact it?
Well, you know, CO2 is part of the air, but I don't think that's the air you're talking about. I think you're talking about PM10 and the other things that are affecting our health. We will make sure, as we go through this project, just as we do with all our projects, that these carbon management, they call them clean industries, but they also have other impacts on the criteria pollutants, sorry, the PM10 and the others. We will make sure that they are appropriately conditioned, that we mitigate all of that just as we mitigate other projects, and we will be working with the air district. So, part of what we also want to do, because remember, most of these are startups, and startups have lots of promise, we're interested in finding out which of these startups are ready to scale up, and they have to fit in California. A startup that started outside California in Arkansas may meet Arkansas standards, but they have to meet the very high standards of California. So, that is part of this due diligence in this process.
The question is that there's, in the western Kern County, there's a lot of oil fields, as we all know, and I'm just going to make a reference to the movie Erin Brockovich, where the contamination of water was a big problem.
Yes.
Especially with the PG&E and the lawsuits and everything. How can Kern keep this CO2 from contaminating the soil and contaminating the areas where people live, you know, so they don't have the same effects that they had, you know, that the movie told us?
Yes, and that is exactly the voices that we want to include in this process. We're going to do this process differently than we established industries in the 50s and 60s. We're going to have everybody at the table, we're going to have those excellent kinds of conversations, but CO2 keeps us all alive. CO2 is in the air. CO2 is produced by plants, right? Your question, however, about water, this carbon management park could also be a catalyst to bring new types of water treatment that could clean up our water. We have 23 million acre feet of degraded water on the west side of this valley, and we need water. So, I think those are good questions. We are not, right now, deciding anything. What we're doing is opening a new dialogue, and we are very grateful to the Department of Energy. They are the experts in these new technologies, and they can tell us the pros and cons of them.
Now, we're talking about the federal DOE.
We are.
Does this state DOE or the state in any way have any involvement in this?
The state gave us letters of support. We totally expect them to be, they're very interested in this, these concepts. We're going to be, you know, keeping the air board involved, we're going to be keeping the water board involved. We are going to include everyone in this new conversation, but we think this could actually be a model. The issue that was brought up about industries is a good point. These are still industries. They don't belong in neighborhoods. They don't belong next to our urbanized areas. So, that's why Kern County has plenty of areas next to our oil fields and in our oil fields where we can do these kinds of industries, and if we do them properly, we won't, we will actually make the air better. There is so much CO2 in the air that we have to take out to address climate change. This is the challenge that's been given to Kern County as one of the counties in California by the state of California, and we believe that we are actually leading the way.
Indeed, we are.
What is that community outreach going to look like? Is there a plan already for that?
I don't have a plan yet. The Department of Energy is going to be talking to me about how that works, but obviously we'll have translation, we'll, you know, now that we're over the pandemic, hopefully we can do it face-to-face. We're going to be working with our organizers, with our environmental justice groups, so that I can make sure that I get all communities, you know, feedback, and that includes Eastern Kern and the mountain communities, because there is always, when you bring new industries, a throw-off. There's indirect sources, there's other sorts of jobs and services, so this is about the entire county.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Thank you. Part of what is so remarkable about this process is how inclusive it has been from day one. You know our planning director, Lorelei Oviat, wants to hear from everyone, has always had an open-door policy, but this time, we were much more aggressive about taking the input, the insights and concerns of people like Dolores Huerta, who is an integral member of this community, who's very supportive and excited about this grant, who provided letters and spoke to the governor, who's personal friends with the head of the Department of Energy, Ms. Granholm, who is, you know, a genius and is excited about Kern County's role in leading not just California and the U.S., but really the globe in how to do this right, how to do it with the strictest environmental standards, but really in partnership, right, with the grassroots legitimacy and credibility that an organization like Dolores Huerta and her personally brings, all the way to our brilliant partners in oil and gas, who we know have the cutting-edge science, cutting-edge technology, and ideas, right, that exist really well in boardrooms, and when partnered with folks like Kern County and this particular planning department, sky's the limit. It's very exciting.
What kind of impact might this have on the oil industry, the local oil industry?
Well, the oil industry is trying to figure out how to navigate California's new carbon neutrality. This is the support for that. Carbon capture, which is taking CO2 and putting it in the ground, doesn't work without sources. This is an opportunity for us to attract millions of dollars, I say billions of dollars, of private investment in these new clean energy and carbon management, because at the end of this, we will have streamlined permitting for this 30 million square foot park. And when people say, "I need a place to store my carbon, I need to take CO2 out of the air either directly, or because I'm producing some green hydrogen, or I'm producing green concrete," those are places the state we need to fix, they can then have pipelines over to these carbon capture areas. So, this is a fit for them. This makes carbon capture. Now, to be very clear, even though Lawrence Livermore Lab did a getting-to-carbon-neutral study, there's really only two counties that can do carbon capture. One of them is Kern, and one of them is San Joaquin County, and we are already ahead in that particular conversation.
Can I answer his question for just a second? You asked something a minute ago, and I think it's important to clarify. You talked about what happened with the PG&E, and I think it was hexavalent chromium. This CO2 is, when it's put in the ground, it will calcify, and it's, it doesn't move at that point. It's in the ground for good. So, that's a huge difference in, I'm trying to address with you earlier.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
If we're talking about oilfield leases and things like that, we're talking about oilfield lease properties, that we're selling back to you guys to use for this property?
No, carbon capture, no, these are all private projects.
Okay, separate.
That's right.
And what, is it, are we talking about a lifespan of how long this kind of project is going to last?
So, are you talking about the carbon management business park, or are you talking about carbon capture?
The business park.
The business park? As long as business parks last, as long as the carbon, but I will say that once you have something like this permitted, over the years, as the technology evolves, the types of industries that go into the park evolve as well.
It's exciting.
A follow-up on the oil industry, it's pretty clear that the oil industry in Kern County and the governor of California don't see eye to eye, and neither does the Kern County Board, I think, so much. How does this kind of jive with that? And are the oil producers, would they be, would they be on board, or have you gone in that direction yet?
I received nothing but congratulations from the oil industry in this forward-thinking idea, because they're the ones who have the, they own the pore space, they own the assets to do carbon capture, and they have been looking to see what is the future of carbon capture. So, I have had nothing with that. I'd like to turn to the board to address the question of the relationship.
That's teed it for you, Zach.
Well, I think this is an example of where, of where the Newsom administration and Kern County can agree, and that they were helpful in our efforts, but I would, just speaking for myself, the notion that we are going to stop fighting for the oil industry to survive the way that it has for decades and decades is, that's not going to stop. We have the cleanest, safest oil production anywhere in the world, and it's vital to our economy, and we believe that more oil needs to be pumped here, and less oil needs to be brought in from Russia, Ecuador, Colombia, Saudi Arabia, et cetera. It needs to be produced here, and we think that we are a part of the solution for a cleaner future, because our oil is the cleanest. And now with this carbon capture opportunity, we're only going to be more a part of the solution to clean the air and reduce the carbon footprint for not just that industry, but other industries that need to offset whatever carbon they're producing.
So, that can coexist harmoniously?
I think, I think it, I think it must.
It must.
Exactly. I was just going to say that. I think it must coexist, but we're, we stand, we stand united, this board, in support of our oil industry, and we've shown that time and time again.
Here, here.
Thank you.
What does that reduction look like? Like, how much carbon is, are we talking about?
Well, the Lawrence Livermore Lab, which you can look at carbon, getting to carbon neutral, has a very large number, but the projects that I've looked at so far, which we are working through, could store 78 million tons of CO2. And to put that in perspective, the only operating carbon capture project only stores 5,000 tons right now.
Where's that at?
Illinois. I think there's one in Canada, too, that may be storing a million tons a year.
Lorelei, can you speak to the overall capacity of sequestration being 18 million something, or 16 of that being here in Kern County? Was on the Department of Energy letter.
That's a good question.
The profound capacity for this operation is exclusively in Kern County, in a way that is rather mind-boggling, and I'm sorry, I don't have the expertise to speak to it here, but so much of the expertise and the capacity is exclusively Kern County, and we're so grateful to the governor for seeing that and partnering with us and being a friend, because we need him.
What's the jobs potential?
My estimation, based on my experience with renewable energy, remember, we're also going to have maybe 30,000 acres or more of solar, this could produce as much as 10,000 construction jobs and 4,000 permanent jobs. Those would be high-roads jobs with good pay, good benefits, because you're talking about industrial projects.
How much private sector investment are we talking about?
Trillions.
I would say that it took $60 billion over the last 15 years, as the chairman noted, to do the thousands of acres of solar out there. I think it is in the $100 billion range, after you look at the size of the carbon capture, size of the variety of carbon management industries, and the amount of renewable energy. As a reminder, we are, we've always talked about putting solar on some of these irrigated lands, but there are problems with the PG&E. It'll be 15 years before they can upgrade that in order to get the transmission. This solar does not need those upgrades. It needs smaller upgrades that can then power this park. So, this is something that we could actually accomplish and have approved and start attracting businesses in four years.
We're going to snip the ribbon.
Well, we're going to luxuriate today in the Department of Energy confidence in Kern County. This absolutely sends a message that we have been established here in Kern County as a center of excellence for carbon management.
Here.
That is a directive the board made to me, and I believe that this is the first step in doing that, and it is a natural fit for us. It's a natural fit for our job skills, it's a natural fit for our communities. The difference is, this time, we're going to bring everyone to the table to make sure that we figure out how to do this, so that it benefits everyone, but we protect the environment.
I'll ask the opposite stuff then. What's the immediate next step? What happens then?
The immediate next step is that I have a call with the Department of Energy, and we designed this program. I believe that we will probably be starting stakeholder meetings by May.
Where will the carbon come from? What technology will be used to gather it, and where will it be injected? At the business park, where will it be injected?
I can answer the third question, Mr. Cox. So, the third question is, the pipelines would then go from the park over to the carbon capturers. The first two questions are the purpose.
Carbon capture or injection?
Carbon capture, the inject it into the pore space. The first two questions are the point of this DOE grant. We need to know the full range of the status of carbon management. How many ways can you take direct air capture, take CO2 out of the air? How many ways are that? Where are they at? Are they all in startup? Are there any ready to build? How much land do they need? Who are these companies? And that, then we go all the way over to green hydrogen. So, how many different ways are the green hydroges, when you take air molecules, break it up, turn it into hydrogen, and it's powered by renewable energy? So, how many different ways can you do that? It needs water. You're taking apart water. Can it use lesser quality water? Those are all the things that we're going to find out from this DOE process, and what are those impacts on jobs? What kinds of job training do you need? What kinds of job skills are involved in that? Do we expect answers? No, we expect a vision. This report will help shape that vision.
My question basically was in regards to what the answer he gave me earlier, that he said that when the CO2 is injected, it actually calcifies. So, what is the process of calcification? Is it calcified, it turns into water first, and then dries up and turns into dirt, or how is the process?
Those are all great questions about carbon capture. I know that Cal State Bakersfield is getting ready to roll out a carbon capture sequestration seminar. We're excited about that, will be part of that. I think those are all questions that we need to work our way through the education. It's all science, there is no doubt that you can capture it. We're going to be working our way through this environmental impact report, and we're going to be looking at questions like, who's going to watch it for 100 years? Those are all questions, and we welcome questions, but we're also here to say that we don't have the answers yet.
It's a talented group of people up here, but I don't see any scientists or physicists. Is there a local expert scientist that you're dealing with, or are it all DOE people?
No, actually, I'm dealing with Lawrence Livermore Lab, who are the experts. They actually have a memorandum of understanding with Bakersfield College and Kern Community College District, and, you know, this will be led by NREL, which is the Department of Energy's scientists who are based in Colorado. I think we have a lot of scientists involved.
You mentioned direct air capture as the technology you're looking at. CRC originally proposed getting capture from an Elk Hills Power Plant out of the smokestack. Has that been ruled out? Because you didn't mention that sort of technology.
You know, I'm not going to mention, I'm not going to discuss that, since we're in an environmental impact report for CRC. I welcome you to go to our website and look at the notice of preparation we released, and we'll be talking about that in the environmental impact report.
So, it's still on the table, then, a smokestack-type removal?
I'm not aware that it's on any table.
Oh, we're looking for investment in areas outside Kern County, given that a lot of the pollution that ends up in this area, even the area you guys talked about, it's not necessarily made here.
You know, I think that's an excellent point. This is going to, we have lots of interest in this grant idea from other counties up and down the San Joaquin Valley. I think you're absolutely right. I think that this carbon management park, we may be in competition with others for some of these industries, if this, if we actually can make this work.
And will this be entirely private industry-funded? Is it possible that state money would be, V3K, has we talked about the SURF money?
Okay. There won't be any SURF money in this, but it's totally possible there could be state grants, or there could be be state grants, or there could be federal grants. That's up to how this is put together by the private sector, and they are certainly open to apply for those types of infrastructure grants, and so are the individual companies. There's lots of grants for individual companies in clean energy.
Do you see the park in western Kern County?
Yes.
I think you said that earlier.
When is that environmental impact report expected to come to fruition?
For the park? Yes, so we're two years away from that. So first, we need to have, maybe less than a year, we need a year to do this report. And then I need the private sector to put together, is this two parks, is this three parks, where is this land? So it's possible it could, we could start that environmental impact report and specific plan at the end of 2023, if the private sector gets incentivized.
We'll take one more question.
CRC has put forward a formal proposal for a project. Chevron's been talking about it, several local oil producers have been talking about it. Is the idea, put all of those at this park, or at least to link them by pipeline to this park?
It's the second comment. It's a link to this park.
Through pipeline?
Through pipelines. There's also the possibility of railing supervisor, the chairman mentioned the ports, you could rail CO2 up to put into our carbon capture areas. There are all sorts of opportunities, because we would be the only place in California that you could do this kind of clean energy.
All right, you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you, Kern County.
Thank you.
Good job.